All right, call this meeting order, please enter the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Please take your seats. So I'll call one councilman or speaker here. Hey Rick, it's Jeff, listen, we're at the meeting, are you ready to go to the meeting, I'm gonna put you on speaker, okay? Alright, thanks. Uh, roll call please. Ister. Rechner. Rochus. Here. Barnhart.
Here.
Martina.
Here.
Uh, there was an executive session held prior to tonight's council meeting to discuss personnel. I have one addition to tonight's agenda is the acceptance of resignation from Officer Keith Cambarelli to be what would have been affected of December thirty first, two thousand twenty-three. So I made the motion to add that to the agenda, do I have a second?
Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Rechner. Ister. Rochus.
Yes. Is there any public comment on agenda items at this time? Any public comment on agenda items at this time? Alright, approval for minutes and reports, uh, minutes from December eleventh and twenty-eighth and second, and reports of the fire department, police department, treasurer, controller, code office, health department, parks and rec, and planning commission, do I have a second?
Second.
Martina.
Yes.
Rechner. Ister. Rochus.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
A sweep date, a sweep update, I'm doing this in behalf of Kurt. So he wanted us to accept a three thousand dollars donation from Purdy Insurance. So I personally make the motion to accept that donation from Purdy Insurance. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Rechner. Ister.
Yes.
Rochus.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
And then with that same donation from Purdys, he is asking for approval to purchase, uh, one of the, another bench for the suite park. Any questions on that? Alright, so I make the motion to purchase that bench with the donation from the Purdy Insurance, do I have a second?
Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Rechner. Ister.
Yes.
Rochus.
Yes. Alright, moving on, Light Fest update.
Um, just want to update on another successful holiday season in the city, we've seen over four hundred fifty children in the Santa House. We gave out approximately probably over seven hundred books based on the Santa House and other events that we have in the city that we provided for, the grant money with Rosenbloom. Century Santa was a suc- uh, Century Santa was a success, we're probably gonna add more time to that. Santa Claus also was a success. Santa Con was a success, that was our first year, uh, we already have our main sponsor, media sponsors for next year. Uh, we are planning a new community event, uh, that will, um, bridge the children and do some stuff with nursing homes and things like that, so that I'll have more information on that. Um, the, um, thank you Department of Public Works as always for your cooperation and Parks and Rec for helping get the pieces, lots of pieces and parts going to that. Uh, thank you Rick Rechner for your donation of additional Christmas trees in the park. Uh, my next question would be, the light poles on Chatham Street. Um, they get decorated, not by Light Fest, and they're sporadic. So are we just letting citizens decorate light poles in the city?
No, next year they'll be able to do it.
And who's doing that?
Matt Reeder, volunteers.
Because I got a lot of questions on why the poles were sporadic at Chatham Street.
Well, it's all the money we get together.
Okay, but Light Fest does decorate the city, so therefore people come to me asking me those questions, that's why I'm asking.
Matt Reeder donated it on his own.
I understand that, but what I'm saying is, my name is on Light Fest along with Christine Rosenbloom and the volunteers, and then we get asked questions as to why the things are sporadic. So thank you for your donation, Mr. Ister, of the money that you put out for there, because I was informed of that. So thank you for that as well. Oh, I know, how about the boards that went on Chatham Street, Mr. Barnhart? Uh, who, whose responsibility is it for this?
Uh, that's Parks and Rec, from what I understand, because Bob Zimmerman donated them to Parks and Rec. He didn't donate to Light Fest, he donated to Parks and Rec.
Okay, well, just so you understand, and here's the other thing, you asked me to come to you and have conversations with you outside of this meeting, and when I do that, no one answers me. Okay, so now I'll have to ask those questions, so she chooses not to answer my email. So here was the thing, Mr. Zimmerman came to me first and said that he was going to loan those boards to Light Fest. And when I fol- yeah, and when I followed up with him, you can sit down and shake your head all you want to.
Because you're wrong, huh?
No, I'm not wrong.
Well, Bob Zimmerman came to me and he told me, he told me that he wanted them to go to Parks and Rec, that he, he was gonna donate them to Parks and Rec, and if Parks and Rec didn't have them, he wanted them back.
Okay, but he had that conversation with me before. Well, you can sit, you can, what are you saying, I'm lying? Obviously, that's what you're saying, if you're saying I'm wrong.
I'm saying Bob, I'm saying Bob Zimmerman, maybe he did go to you, but he came to me also.
Okay, so I think, I just wanted to explain something with that, so you put. Really, Mr. Barnhart? See, this is what I'm talking about, when, when, so somebody that is a chair of a committee in the city can't talk to city council without attitude and having things thrown back in her face. I don't find it to be appropriate, especially the amount of time that I put into it and the volunteers. Well, you don't like to answer.
Alright guys, continue please.
Which is disgusting. So it brings me to my next point of Christmas in July, which is always the fourth Saturday of the month. And now there is another event that was scheduled for July twenty-seventh. So I need some resolution on this, because my vendors are calling me and asking me why Christmas in July isn't the fourth Saturday of July, which again, I emailed to Mr. Ister, I talked to you on the phone, which you said it was not approved yet, and therefore it's being advertised out there. And then when I tried to have a conversation with that committee person, he hung up on me for the third time. So that committee person and Light Fest only will communicate through email, so that I have a trail, because it shows the maturity level of our folks that we're dealing with in the city, that although I'm responsible for getting all this stuff done and the pieces and parts of all your departments.
Maybe the digs can change.
Okay, my other concern was, my other concern with that is, is where, where's the process with the events? Because my understanding was, is that we come in, we do the paperwork, and then Mr. Slate and Ms. Lloyd were supposed to be part of that. Is that still a process, or what do we do with that there? Because I don't know who to go to and speak to about my event.
Now, did you turn your paperwork in yet?
No, I didn't turn my paperwork in, because when I came, that date was already being advertised, and it wasn't even approved yet. So therefore. It's a stand, no, I have it, but that's a standing date, and that was understood, and you voted on that years ago.
This is why, Vicky, this line has changed.
Okay, but here's my other point. The point was, the point was, is that other people that did events in the city had a hard time because another event happened in the same month. So this was the point of that committee coming together to approve the events, because now we not only have the kickoff celebration at the beginning of June, then you have summary celebration, then you have that event, and then you have Christmas in July. That's really taxing on our businesses that we're asking for sponsorship and stuff. So that was the whole point of people doing their paperwork. The set date, your, the summary celebration is always the second Saturday of July. Therefore, we said that that was what's gonna happen with Christmas in July, because we know when there's consistency. So now we're asking our businesses for major events to happen. So that's why I'm coming from the business side of it. So you, oh, okay, so that doesn't matter. So my question is, so when I come in and I do my paperwork, it goes to you to be approved. Who else puts their hands on that paperwork to make sure it's out there, make sure everyone understands when it's happening, and where's it go from there? Because I get, because when I hand my paperwork in, then I'm told I didn't do it right, which I did. So who does I go to?
Back to the tax. Somebody's helped us around twenty years. When, you know, I started the River.
Kickoff or whatever.
I didn't say you won't do it, because it's gonna be taxing on us. We want more events in the city of Sunbury. This is just the way things work.
Okay, that's not my concern, my concern is.
You said it a minute ago.
I'm moving on, like you guys through me, moving on. So, um, so where does the paperwork go once it's turned in?
It's turned in, uh, bottom, pulls it out, and so when I look at it.
Okay, so Ms. Lloyd initially tried to no longer involve with coordinating with events or anything like that.
No, they were changed.
Okay, so that would, but who'd be to let the committee people know that? Because that's where the confusion comes in. Do we have a list of, of items that we need to use, like garbage cans and the dunk tank and all of those things? Is there a fee schedule for that yet? Because we talked about it a lot, but I.
First of all, it was a city event, so you don't pay it. Never did, am I correct?
For it to keep changing, that's why I'm asking.
What changed? Have you paid anything, Vicky, for using the.
No, I used, I used, I paid for the dumpster, and then I, you know, no, I haven't paid for it, but I, I've done that.
So it's often changed.
Okay, but I'm still asking for somebody else that might want to do an event in the city, because people do ask those questions, so is there a fee schedule?
I recommend them coming to the city hall.
I understand that, but I'm asking is, if I do something outside of the city, which I do, I sit on other boards, so if I was on another board and we're gonna do an event, is there a fee schedule, or isn't there?
I know there's been conversations about charging, there's never been a determination if we're gonna charge, for example, for tables, trash bags, cans, whatever it may be.
Right.
I mean, I think.
So right now, we still don't have that?
Correct.
We probably got to charge for nonprofits. Excuse me, we didn't, we discussed getting more equipment?
Correct, yes, we did.
Okay, okay, so I'm good to go and turn in my paperwork for the twenty-seventh, and then I can begin advertising, why don't you? If I can, you say?
Get through group of that.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
Alright, uh, new business, no, excuse me, old business, skip the whole section. Alright, old business here, so I know our topic was Dollar General. So basically, at last meeting, we found out information that fifty years ago, that the property up there was purchased with federal, federal grant money. Joel and Derek did some research into it, so long story short, if you, if you never lose any of that piece of property, you have to find property similar to that elsewhere in the city. So for example, the Dollar General was looking for about one and a half acres of property, for example. And so if we could sell it off to Dollar General, we'd have to find about one and a half acres similar to that in the city somewhere to change to recreation, therefore that's not lost. Biggest issue is, there's not that type of acreage available in the city, or else Dollar General would have found it. So pretty much Dollar General's going up there, it's practically a no-go, just all of a sudden, there's property found elsewhere. Uh, but there is one last lead looking somewhere, not for the city, not for us, but for Dollar General. I know Jeff and I are working with Pat Higgins, the representative who's working with Dollar General, so Dollar General, the city summary is not dead yet, but it's not looking very great. But that also goes back to the skate park portion of it, about, I know there's a lot of guys here interested in helping Councilman Ister rebuild that skate park and get that fired back, because I know last meeting, they came saying, hey, how why summary skate park is such a main attraction to many people because of the lights being a little bit off, especially at this time of the year, I know it's still on right now, but also because of the lights, they need to be out there later than the most skate parks. I know they're very interested in seeing that skate park being revamped and wanting to work with Councilman Ister to try to build something, either remodel or build something newer, save the art, and I know they're kind of on that, so. I just want to give an update on that. You're welcome. So then moving on to the Rave mobile system notification, notification. So, uh, I know we talked about doing a notification system for residents in the city of Sunbury here. Uh, Jeff was helping me look at there were many different options. We actually contacted the municipal authorities, see what they have, and we came to another, uh, we decided to go with them on that. So they have unlimited text message, unlimited calls, unlimited emails for us. And we also kind of tried to help them and say, hey, you know, since you're kind of doubling up in the city of Sunbury, maybe when contract comes up with the municipal authority, maybe we cut them a break, because that's how we found out. So in your package, you will see for the, the Rave mobile, excuse me, uh, the Rave mobiles. Yeah, so, and like I said, ours are very similar to SMA's, obviously, you know, like, obviously, we just had a snowstorm, we just sent alerts out on that, you know, advising people the do's and don'ts, help out DPWs so people don't throw their snow in the streets. I listened to you, Steve. So, uh, does anybody have any questions on that? And Joel, did you have a chance to look over that number?
I did, yes.
Okay, did you see any issues with that contract or anything like that?
The only issue I saw was that it is, there's small print, it's make you go to a thing on the internet, a site, and it's like twelve pages more of small print. And in that, it says that any, um, disagreements will need to be handled in the state of Massachusetts, because that's where Rave is.
Yes, sir.
So if we would have to sue them, or if they would sue us, it's going to Massachusetts, which isn't a deal breaker, that happens all the time, but I wanted the council to be aware of it before you enter.
You'll be going on a road trip.
You're gonna.
Alright, does anyone have any issues with the, uh, us purchasing and going with this? It's a three-year, it's a three-year contract for a total of eleven thousand dollars. Any questions, any concern anyone?
Thirty-five hundred dollars a year and five hundred dollars to start up.
For activation. Everybody good? Alright, so I'll make the motion to have the city purchase the three-year, uh, term for the Rave mobile safety for the nine eleven thousand plus the, in, uh, the activation fee. Do I have a second?
Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Rechner. Ister. Rochus.
Yes. Alright, thank you. Uh, moving on, uh, twenty twenty-four fee schedule, um, I'm just gonna table that to next council meeting, that way we get more further updates, everything is accurate going into twenty twenty-four. So I'll make the motion to table the fee schedule, do I have a second?
Martina.
Yes.
Rechner. Ister. Rochus.
Yes. Alright, so moving on to new business, uh, committees and boards, we have many, this is our yearly motion, so, um, I'm gonna save one to the very end, because there's one that has multiple candidates for only three positions. So I'm gonna go through the ones that we don't have to eliminate through. So, so Park and Rec, there are five individuals, Dave Persing, Don Scheit, Lee Bartovic, Jenna Edwiddie, Aker Ister for DEI, Andres Menresa, Housing Authority, Bibi Harpers, uh, Michael Hogan, Planning Commission, Larry Roffler, Civil Service Board, Norm Koch, Shaytrin, Joe Bartella, Hark, Amy Butner, and Assistant EMA, Tony Culp. So I will make the motion to accept all those individuals to the boards listed below, do I have a second?
Second.
Barnhart.
Yeah, we're gonna go back to municipal. Yeah, well, yeah, we'll have to open up for one more, but that's for the candidates, who advertise that?
Yes.
Barnhart. Martina.
I have to stay in from Dave Persing, but yes.
Yeah, I'm staying from Tony Culp also.
Rechner.
Yes.
Ister.
Yes, I'm staying by Ister. Rochus.
Yes. Alright, so moving on to municipal authority board, we're gonna do these by individuals. Uh, so first, uh, we wanna appoint Corey Fossil for the remaining term of Charlie Shinkle, who's been on the board for many years. So I'll make that a motion to have Corey fill that position for the remaining term, do I have a second?
Rechner. Ister. Rochus.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Okay, uh, for the full term, uh, I'm already sort of doing this by individual. Uh, Tom McBrien, do I, I make that a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Rechner. Ister. Rochus.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Alright, moving, last one, uh, Norm Koch, I'll make that a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Ister. Rochus.
No.
Barnhart.
No.
Martina.
Yes.
Rechner.
Yes.
Alright, so that's everyone for the committees and the board appointments. Uh, moving on, Councilman Barnhart, Hark.
Make the motion to, uh, have a permanent addendum for the Hark for one fifty-eight Market Street.
I will second. It's one fifty-eight Market Street.
Oh, okay.
Martina.
Yes.
Rechner. Ister. Rochus.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina.
Uh, Mr. Backer, Rack P letter for Fresh Roast Coffee.
Um, we need to have a letter of cooperation with Fresh Roast Coffee for Rack P, for the Rack P requirements. Um, Joel looked over it and it seems an issue, I believe, um, and it's pretty standard of honestly, if we say no, then we don't. So, um, I'm looking for voting.
That's correct, I looked it over, it's a new one.
Alright, so I'll make the motion for the letter of Rack P for cooperation with Fresh Roast Coffee, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Rechner. Ister. Rochus.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina.
Alright, uh, SRI Rack P application.
I'll, I'll be here on their behalf.
Okay, please.
Melissa Rouse, Library Director of the Degency Community Library. Uh, we are seeking, um, to look into doing another Rack P for the second phase of the Albright Center. Uh, we are finalizing the current Rack P that we have, but we're looking for the city to approve us to file the e-application, which is due this Friday. And we've been wondering if you would like us to apply for that, or would you like us to send it here?
Probably easier for me to apply for it. I know I'm too many work to do it.
Yes.
Alright, any question, anyone, Melissa? Alright, so I'll make the motion for the Rack P application for SRI, do I have a second?
Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Rechner. Ister.
Yes. Uh, Rick, I'm gonna do the tax donations for you, is that o- is that okay?
Thank you.
Yeah, alright, so we have a total of three hundred and twenty dollars for tax donations for non-residents, so I'll make the motion to accept those exonerations, do I have a second?
Martina. Rechner.
Yes.
Ister. Rochus.
Yes.
Yes.
Alright, and Rick, once again, I'll do the vouchers and invoices for you, okay?
Thank you.
Alright, so I'll make the approval for the vouchers and invoices for the general fund of forty-two thousand six hundred four dollars and forty-four cents. The fee was zero, private grants is zero, and payroll of seventy-eight thousand sixty-seven dollars and fifty-four cents. Do I have a second?
Ister. Rochus.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Rechner.
And just, I will say this, the public announcement, just for, because we're talking about invoices and vouchers, that delinquent taxes will be turned over to Keystone Collections. So once again, uh, delinquent taxes will be turned over to Keystone Collections. And now, discussion topics, I got a few. Alright, so I just want to recap here, on New Year's Eve, it was a huge success up at the Ice Video Rink, and we had the free skate, I'd probably say, estimates of talking to people up there, close to a thousand people up there throughout the three-hour time. We had a lot of help up there, we had the Grinch show up, we had the Transformer show up. Jeff, what else did we have up there? Man, Jeff, Jeff was there too.
Lot of food.
Lot of food, lot of giveaways, like I said, a huge thank you to the volunteers and the city employees up there who worked that day. It was chaotic, but there were no issues, so that was a huge success for the city up there. And also, down at, uh, New Year's Eve, the park with the light bulb, another huge success, there were no issues. The vendors made out pretty well, everyone enjoyed the music, the fireworks, and like I said, a huge thank you to all our city workers throughout the day that made it happen. Like I said, uh, Mikey Long, Carl were a huge help. Steve come down there, knew, after the light bulb dropped and all the confetti blew, taking the light bulb away, so that was really great, so a huge thank you to all the city employees and volunteers that made that happen, and also for our sponsorships. But then, moving on to the kickoff here, I just wanted to let the public know that it'll be taking place on Saturday, June eighth, down at the Riverfront again. Uh, we have a lot of stuff planned out for that whole weekend. I know, um, uh, excuse me, uh, some of the people on the partner do a bigger event. So we got together with some of the people in the local, local community that are tattoo artists, and they wanted to do a whole weekend convention with the rink, they wanted to name it Ink the Rink, for a Friday, Saturday, Sunday convention up there to help partner with the kickoff, to help bring more people into our city. I know I mentioned it, the SRI, some of the board members, or people who volunteered up, possibly bringing the sandwich stroll back to that same weekend, because that was a huge success there. So hopefully, they can make that happen as well. And I know there's some other individuals here tonight about doing a bike rally also in Sunbury over the summer. So a lot of good events coming in, coming this summer, so we just wanted to try to keep the public updated so everyone's aware of what's going on. So any questions on New Year's Eve kickoff or events coming forth that I just announced? Alright. Moving on to the next one, alright, uh, employee trainings, uh, one thing that we get, that elected officials get many advertisement or different trainings that they suggest that we go through and that our employees go through. I mean, it came from Purdy Insurance, our insurance provider, some suggested trainings that our employees should do. In case litigation should ever come up, we could say, hey, we offer these trainings to our employees, so we are covered. I mean, the list was sent out, I know Jerome, you had some issues or questions about the trainings, so I figured we could figure out how anyone is opposed, against it, or what people may be thinking on getting our employees more up-to-date training on different situations.
Training is good for everybody, as long as it's not profitable. My concern was, is that, you said it messed up to have employees do something, to have council approving it first, ordering it, is, um, something the father shouldn't have, number one. And two, if insurance companies say, can you do this, is that what the judge of opinion?
No, we went to them asking, hey, I mean, I won't say me, I, I'll say I. I went to them saying, hey, are there any trainings that you suggest that could help us, you know, just keep us up to date, we'll save, we'll save laws, or how to deal with people, X, Y, and Z. And they gave us, you know, the list that was sent out, you know, trainings that, hey, you wanna help your employees, help the city, in case anything should happen, here's a list of different trainings. And some of them are two minutes long, some may be a half hour long, the trainings that we can do. And they said, we do trainings all the time, I know, I know the police do, I know Steve and Craig attend trainings, online virtual trainings that, that they, you know, that they look for to help better themselves, be the most adequate for the help to city, so. And I have no issue with them, you know, taking a half hour, an hour, or whatever it is a day, to find, whatever, obviously, when they have downtime, if they're busy, we don't expect them, alright, to drop everything, but, you know, there's not, there's, can't get more, we can't get enough training to help stay up to date on different situations.
Is the other question, this is mandatory?
Well, I say it is mandatory, if someone chooses not to do it, I mean, A, you sign off saying, hey, we completed, or B, I'm refusing to do this, so if something does happen, hey, you refuse to do it, that's on you.
So do you have to update their policy manual?
Well, we can, but it also says in there, you know, with other duties deemed by councils.
But I think that stresses it, when we put trainings in there, all of it, you know, that's, maybe that's something.
I mean, we can, we're gonna have to add that footnote in the manual to.
I don't think if you're gonna do this, we just wanna put it in the personal.
Alright, we can do that. We can do that, it's no problem. Does anybody have any issues on these trainings that were sent out that we should suggest the employees take time throughout the day to complete?
I just have one thing to add, and that is, I don't think these employee trainings, as everybody is discussing, are merely to help us out in case something happens, but I think they're also proactive, so that something doesn't happen, and it teaches our folks how to avoid those situations that could get them. So for that reason alone, I think they're pretty valuable, I don't have any problem at all including something in the policy manual and, um, getting approval, um, from the board, the council. But at the same time, I think that we gotta keep in mind, it's not only retroactive if something bad happens, but it's proactive to avoid bad things.
So is everybody good so far, what we have? Alright. Alright, moving on. Uh, citywide computer upgrade, I know Chief Remagen and Marcus have been talking with Infra Dad about our computer systems at the police department, how Windows ten is gonna be obsolete here coming into year, and we're gonna have to upgrade to Windows eleven. And just being proactive with the citywide computer system, probably what's gonna happen with our computers eventually, a city hall, DPW, Parks and Rec, that it's gonna have to go from Windows ten to Windows eleven, obviously. The upgrade, that's not free, we're gonna, that's gonna be a cost. So I just wanna get the city aware of this, that maybe we can start looking at different other valuable options for grants, things like that, to try to cover the cost of us having to upgrade, because it's a matter of time, so it happens.
Supposed to keep that, supposed to keep us up to date on.
Well, I think it's, I, we'll have to go back and look at the contract, Infra Dad said they were gonna do lots of things they don't do, so. But I look.
Two questions.
I think we have two more years left, I think. It's either two, one or two, I'm not sure. At the end of, yeah, at the end of twenty-four. I just wanna bring it now in January, so we don't wait till December and say, oh man, we gotta find X dollars to get the system upgraded, or softwares, or whatever it may be. Yeah, they sent us, I know they sent us a number just for the police department chief. What was that number? Just for the police?
Police department, they're not used to that.
So, just for the police department, it was nineteen, twenty thousand. I was just, for at least I didn't include the rest of the city.
Yeah, and, and, and Councilman Ister, if, if, I can say, they'll, InfraDad will come in and they'll go in the back doors and actually tell you what computers need to be updated. That's kind of what they say they do with us, and they said, hey, you're gonna need it, you know, soon, but I wanted to, you know, get it out, because it's something we're gonna have to look for in the near future. Put it in here.
Alright, any other questions on that? So, we can try to get ahead of that. Everybody good on that? Alright.
Can I just ask a question? So, is the municipal authority also aware of that?
I don't know who municipal authority has for their IT services. I'm not aware of what they use or what they don't use or who they talk to, so I.
Right, I understand that, but they're still kind of under the umbrella.
Alright, so moving on, parking slash dispute process for parking tickets. So, they'll say there's some confusion on where people need to go. So, just recently, treasurer troops said, the police department, they're no longer taking money for parking tickets, whatever, a street super violation, whatever it may be. But they're the ones handling disputes. So, I'm kinda confused why the treasurer takes their funds, but the police have to handle the dispute. It's just like a big, long process that people are getting confused about. I mean, every other department takes their own funds. Like, for example, when the code office is dealing with the permit, everything is dealt with the code office. When things are being dealt with Parks and Rec and fees for events, everything's going right to Parks, right to Parks and Rec. So, does anyone have an issue with the fees, the disputes going right to the police department and not having to go to the treasurer department saying, oh, you need to go here to do this process or do me here to do that? Does anyone have any process, problem with that? Because after a forensic audit, after an audit from the state police, everything showed the police were clear of everything, so.
There's one issue. There was a situation last year, person had two private tickets for, they still removed.
Yeah.
Present pays them in cash. Two weeks later, he gets two notices in the mail, now they go with fifty dollars instead of.
And that's the problem, like, there's, who's dealing with what? That's the problem.
Problem was, the cash at the police department was put in the drawer. So, after Brad here was notified about it, he came back to the treasurer and said, we found the money, it was in the drawer. Now, two things happened. Why the money was in the drawer for over two weeks, three weeks?
Mike can't speak for how.
No, I'm asking you, I mean, there's no reason where the cash should be in there, number one.
Correct.
Number two, once the guy paid the cash, why were them, the payment installed the system and showed the payment was made?
I guess I can't, I can't speak to that. I mean, if one incident, if there's only one out of how many, we'll take those odds, but yes, you're correct. If we can fix that process, I think it's just a matter of saying, are they only, are they going to do different locations or they just gonna stick with one? Like, I have no problem having the treasurer department handle the payment, but they're also gonna handle the disputes also. They can't pick and choose what part they wanna do, you know what I mean? Yeah, go, go ahead, Rick.
How can, how can somebody in the treasurer's office determine or change a decision made by the police department, like it did?
And, and.
And tell me, if, if Bill Brooks comes off the street and I, I sent it to the treasurer's office, and it considers this, well, I started here, so I say, okay, but why?
Well, and that's, and that's the whole point. I mean, we wanna make sure those decisions don't happen. I know they have happened in the past, not saying they're right or wrong. But that's why we wanna try to keep everything in one location, disputes, payment, everything.
I don't like that quite at all, but, and, and I think the police department is fine, as long as the information and money is getting from the police department to the department in a timely manner. And happening. Not just the tickets, we have got bills, we have got bills for months later that we're paying, or not paying, to vendors, because they have to, they could give it to someone at the police department and then report to city hall.
Once I, we. Yeah, we can fix that, we can make sure that process changed and they get down there on a timely manner, and everybody signs off or make sure, hey, received on this date. Because I know in the past, we've tried to set things up like that, saying, alright, you know, the police sign off, someone in the finance department signs off, but that wasn't always reciprocated on the finance and by individuals in there, so.
Right. Well, I find this point I'm trying to make, is anything that's done and it's stuck in the core, saying, uh, wait, hold on, next time I come down here, that's forgotten about, is not knowledgeable. It is not right, and if it continues, there should be discipline.
Correct, and it's like, we can fix those, we can't, we can't change what happened in the past. We only change what's moving forward. We can make sure that doesn't happen.
But going forward, and this, we got, if, if, if somebody goes to the police department and says, why, that's the police department's office, and say, you gotta go to city hall to do it, or, or we'll take twenty years' time for it, but I don't think that the treasurer's office has the authority to waive, um.
Disputes.
Disputes, unless it's downright, I mean, obvious that they should have.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm pretty sure we could probably sit down with the chief here and figure out a procedure, say, if, you know, for, for example, four o'clock, alright, we'll make sure all the funds are down at city hall before you guys close up down there, so you get them on a daily basis, or whatever it may be.
Yeah, that's the only thing about that. We're waiting, the morning, right, make sure there's stuff down on a daily basis, except for the weekend, November, Friday, Saturday, then on Monday morning. And the other, the other department, it's like, when it is right inside the office, right, those money are brought back to the treasurer on a daily basis at the end of the day.
Yeah, so we have, like I said, we have no problem doing that. I think Jerome here has something he wants to add to it.
Well, I guess, one's a question. So, when, when they, when someone would come in to the police department, do they have the ability to go through the system and show that it's paid?
Yeah, they can do that right on the spot.
Can you do that, Travis?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, you know, that'll leave the setup, and, and of course, they can do this, period. But if everything comes down on a daily basis, the same way with bills, if it comes down on a daily basis, I think there'd be a lot less confusion about what goes on. Now, the problem is, is who's gonna sign off on this, for one. And two, there's somebody that always get, Travis, is there somebody that'll be there all the time for when people come in, or, or business downtime, I'm not talking about city hall.
Yeah, there's always someone there. We implemented, the bill's coming down. I actually did that when I first took office, was they come down every day. I actually have them coming down every day, and then they go down. But there's always somebody in the office who made the board.
And the money?
Yeah.
So.
Well, we haven't had the money because when, for you, my chief.
Okay.
They, they basically had taken that off, and then it just has to come, you know, whatever, however you guys wanna do it.
Would it be possible to get a sign hangup saying that, say, this, and disputes are accepted, coming down?
Yes, we can, we can do that. I said, I just wanna keep everything under one location, so the people are showing there, they're not allowed to take the money, but they handle dispute, it's just. Exactly, and, you know, as Rick said, how can someone down there change a dispute when, you know, so we just wanna try to keep everything under one location.
But I think the big thing is, is making sure the money is down.
Daily with everything else, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know four o'clock is the right time, I don't know.
But we, you know, we could come up with some timeframe, but, you know, we can make, I know Travis.
I would say, I would say three o'clock, anything you get after that.
Yeah, we can make it the next day, and we can do that. It's not, it's not an issue.
Yeah, right now, I have where the, we pick up, I will monitor paywalls, pick up at eleven o'clock, and then two o'clock is everything goes to city hall. So, it'll always be there by two o'clock. As long as anything after, comes in after two o'clock, we'll be the next one.
That's fine, as long as you're able to go through the system, the part that these people were paid. So, if somebody doesn't pay.
Yeah, the late fine, yeah, no, that's fine. Is everybody okay with keeping it, everything at the police department, having it come down on a daily basis? Everybody good with that?
Again, the only concern is to make sure somebody's there, that's gonna be able to handle this.
Yeah, if, if Marcus isn't there, then it's Harvey. So, if I keep Harvey in, I keep Harvey in.
Okay, just so somebody's there, so they don't walk in and say, hey, nobody would answer, both.
No, I understand. Alright, moving on from that one. Alright, the vote launch, or some, someone's been asking questions about, you know, are the lights ever gonna be working down there? I know Councilman Ister said, you know, we're looking for grant money, getting it fixed. I just didn't know where we were at on that, and. Alright, because, you know, people said, like, in the summertime, like, a lot of people go voting down there and fishing. They said it's nice to have lights down there just for their own safety, you know, so they can see what they're doing, you know, pulling their stuff in and out. Yeah, okay, I'll let them know that you're looking into it, hopefully, get them back with some answers soon. Yeah. Alright, moving on, banking options. First National Bank reached out to Derek about who they contacted. They contacted me about if we wanna look into their banking options. They have many different things they offer. I know the one thing that Rick was really looking into with InfraDad, now, excuse me, InfraDad, was Plegit, was getting cash back if you use a credit card. They, they offer that same process over there at First National Bank. I mean, any, any vendor that accepts a credit card, you get one percent back on your cash, like, for example, any, like, PPNL, UGI. Steve going to NAPA to get parts, he's instant one percent back. So, I didn't know if we wanna look into some of the options that they may offer for us. I know right now, we just use credit cards, we really don't get anything for it, but, you know. We just met, I didn't, I just said, I'd bring the information to council, that this was something council wanted to look more into. They gave us more information, they sit down and talked to us about it, so I didn't know this was something that council wanted to do. But, for example, when we're doing projects, or street projects, or whatever it may be, like I said, if they accept a credit card, or we make them accept a credit card, we get one percent back on all those projects and all the things that we're doing. Okay. Close, right, 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 right next door, right next door. And then, and then some of the other process they talked about was like, being able to pay directly online. For example, I know contractors, when you work on a Saturday, but the code, the code's open, that's no one's fault, but and there's an option online, they go in, pay right there, get your permit, or whatever they need, right there on my, on the weekend. Those are different options that they said they can offer. They said that they do. Yeah, so they said that's. Yeah, and they said, you know, yeah, they said they, they deal with the Midwest school district, different departments in the rural counties, so.
So, sorry, so they said, in order to give you an accurate assessment of what you can pay for the city, you have to give them the patient, otherwise it's a snippet of what they actually pay. So, if you wanted a proposal, a bill proposal, then or anything, a bill proposal, you have to give them the patient, and they want, I just, not, I don't know, the patient, and then they come in to give you that presentation, and it goes forward, and explain this to you.
So, Rick, are you okay if I reach back out to First National Bank with you and put it in the email? Yeah, alright, that works. What I'll do, I'll reach out, put you in the email, and whatever information they need, we'll get it to you. Does that sound good? Alright, awesome, thank you. Go ahead, Joel. Okay.
I'm not sure what they want.
Yeah. Okay.
Well, I think, yeah, if they give you a list, and if there's nothing proprietary, I'll look.
Okay, I'll see what they need, and then if we need to vote, we can come. Yeah.
And if it's, and if something that would be okay, or under right though, I think okay, I'm fine.
Yeah.
But if it's not, I don't think.
Alright, sounds good. Thank you, Joel. Alright, and the last one here, four forty, Marcus Street, the old police station. I was talking with the chief, and chief, correct me if I'm wrong, everything's out. Only thing that has to go is bring a dumpster in, junk everything that's no longer good, get rid of some papers that need shredded, and the building is good to go, correct? And speeding up shredding, I know Jeff's been working on this, remember you saying that? Jeff, I read, April twentieth, I know shredder recyclers coming up there at, at the pool area parking lot again. So, like I said, we can get that stuff shredded up there, other than getting a dumpster down there, getting out, you know, junk.
Well, if we box it up, and get it out, because Steve and I spoke, and, and there was much stuff that are solid, or whether they're scrapped, or, 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 or scrapped up. So, we can do it in three days, or maybe a couple of days, and then we'll be out, and then we're good. So, I think it's, uh, okay.
So, I just wanna give everyone an update, so Councilman Ister, you know you're good to go. Alright, so that was that. Announcements, next council meeting will be held here.
Yes.
Oh, you're good.
Oh, I did.
You're good.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, thank you, sir, you're good. So, going back to city ordinances, I know I was talking with the chief, that some of our city ordinances do not match up with what's on our websites and what's on our books. So, I know he's working with Marcus, and he's on your help, Robin's help, along with Joel's help, to make sure everything is matching up with these police end. Mike, I don't know what it looks like with the code office, making sure any of the fees or citations are all matching up, so I just wanna bring, make sure you're good on your end.
Well, we, we're good, that needs to be done beforehand, if things bad, you do, there's some ordinance that will remove the power, whoever.
Yeah, whatever, something, it may not work, it might get oversigned.
You have ordinance that will do, that will help us, especially in situations where there's.
Yeah. Alright, so maybe, I said, you, John, Derek, Joel, say, think, get together, see what needs to be added back in. Alright, so like I said, I just wanna make sure we're on the same page here, so if we ever do have to give citations that, you know, that were solid and concrete on the books, that means we won't lose those things if we ever do have to. So, that was basically an update for them. You mean for the committees? We weren't gonna start that until January. I mean, excuse me, this is January, February, until, because we, we didn't vote on it until like the last meeting in December, to say, hey, you guys, the first one here. We didn't really, we thought we were just doing it, or you're saying, you wanna vote us to vote on it?
No, I'm just saying, are we gonna do that?
Like, we all agreed on it at the last meeting and the discussion item, so I figured we were. Already went official vote, we can vote, it's not. Joel, do we need to vote to have an?
I don't think you need to vote.
Okay.
So, you're not expecting any money, you're just having.
Yeah, yeah, of course. Alright, any other topics of discussion I may have missed? Alright, moving on, now there are announcements. The next city council meeting will be here January twenty-second at six fifteen. Our, uh, the Electric Recycling Day will be April twentieth, from ten to twelve, of the pool parking lot. Heritage Day Planning Committee will be Thursday, January eighteenth, six p.m., city hall, conference room? Conference room. And now, is there any public comment at this?
If I, if I could before.
Go ahead. One, one, one second, Rick, one second. I'll get right to you. Mike Rhodes has a quick announcement real quick. So. Alright, sounds good.
So, I just wanna remind all the citizens of St. Barry that we do have a few ordinances on the books that are still in the books that we are still enforcing. And one of them are, is that all sidewalks need to be cleared of snow within twenty-four hours of the storm. We're out today, I believe we gave thirty-seven warnings to individuals that did not clear their sidewalks. And yesterday, I was out driving the streets, seeing some people clearing their sidewalks, and I actually caught two individuals throwing snow on the streets. Asked them to clean up and asked them not to do it, and I actually saw, I actually saw a citizen shovel in the street.
So, you're just.
What I'm, what I'm, what I'm saying is, this is the public's warning that if your sidewalks are not uncovered from a storm within twenty-four hours, or you're caught throwing snow on the streets, you're unlikely to get a citation, and the fines range from one hundred to one thousand dollars. There's gonna be no more warnings, and that is for the rest of the winter, and I wanna get with city council and Jeff to make announcements on our city website. And I'd like to get with Francis to do news articles in the spring. I'd like to keep enforcing this with grass, weeds. I'd like to keep enforcing this with grass, weeds, weather, fresh, whatever it may be, um, so we can continue to make our city a better place to live.
Okay, I just wanna partner with that because I was the one that was shoveling the street because it seemed as if the plow missed the 800 block of this one half way. And stuff was coming back on my sidewalk, and I'm really getting in the way. So I shoveled it out of the way, and I believe that...
Alright, now, is there any public comment at this time? Public comment at this time? Please state your name, sir.
Jeremy Power. So just a question, uh, does Parker, like, have a plan to repair the current skate park?
Yes.
Well, first of all, remember you were gonna take and put those panels in the force a couple years ago?
Did that.
Okay. Any options more you can replace, we have some more panels to go in.
Okay, uh, so the problem I've learned then too is, we don't, they don't manufacture parks. So... That, that is, it's just gonna break the park, so...
But a true suggestion, a new skate park, somehow.
The, the park is getting to a point where it's gonna become dangerous, um, probably towards the end. I mean, it's dangerous now, but it's, it's getting to a point where it's just dis- disrepair. So, we need to start really looking at something to, to put in place.
Matter of fact, there's what I spoke today, the Lock Haven, it's out there, $852,000. So, we'll start looking around for $852,000.
Do you want, would you, would it help, would it help city out if we start a nonprofit in order to raise the funds to build the skate park?
Joel, would you mind helping us start a nonprofit?
I told him last time I'd do it for nothing. If you, if you still wanna do that, Jeremy, I'll do it.
Yeah, for sure, we, we're trying to just, we're trying to see what's happening with Dollar General, and it's like that, that means it's...
The chill sale a little bit, yeah.
So, in order for us to build it, I mean, I'd really like to attack DCNR to, for matching grants, and for us to, to raise some money, so, uh, it's getting to a point where that park is, is worn out, yeah.
Well, and the nice thing is, if you do a nonprofit, sometimes melding the city with the nonprofit, like we do with that ROI and things, makes you eligible for better and more grants. So that's a really good idea. And just so you know, the sooner you get with it, the better, because it does take a while. We can come in 501(c)(3). I can get you a Pennsylvania nonprofit within two years' time, but the 501(c)(3), so sooner the better.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Drew.
Any other public comments? Please state your name, man.
Deborah Benz. I just wanna say my son is home from Camp Pendleton with his wife, and he came down to the New Year's Eve celebration. They had so much fun, they did not do a little go home, and I think it was like two for anyone. So congratulations, you actually did an awesome, awesome job.
Let me try to pass it on, I'll let everybody know, may that happen.
Yeah, yeah, they did a great job.
Thank you. Please state your name, sir.
Nathan. Uh, I just have a quick question about the Sumberry skate park lights. Uh, we have four of them, and this past week, there's only been one on. Uh, I work 66, usually Monday through Friday, make an exception to get here. But, um, it is very dangerous having one light on, so, you know, four...
I checked the, checked the panel bars because apparently the breakers tripped, uh, because of the wear of it, so...
Yeah, usually, you know, we start out the floor as years go on. There's no consistency when they're on, when they're off, nothing. Um, but this last week, there's only been one, and...
Maybe I can, I also have these panel box, so anytime that stuff happens, you can get a little thing. Uh, I think water gets into the, into the system, so... Anytime that happens, you can get a little nail, if you wanna have to go with the lights on.
Alright, good to know, because you have one light on, it's, uh, a lot more things.
Please state your name, sir.
Uh, my name's Portus Danchip from the Blue Lovers Benefit Club. We're a nonprofit organization. Um, we'd be honored to basically, you know, be a part of the new project for skate parks. And, uh, you know, there's, we have a full spreadsheet of, you know, things that we would have, you know, and obviously, you know, with our donation of, you know, help cleaning up and everything else, you know, in the process of doing an event. Um, other than that, I mean, obviously it's up to you guys, but we would be more than honored to do it. We have a ride and also the whole function itself. So, um, I mean, obviously, you guys are gonna make your own decision on that. But I think it'd be a good idea because it will bring new people into Sumberry and see that there's a lot of good here instead of just, you know, downfall. So, I mean, honestly, that, that's what I got for yous.
Alright, yeah, just give us your contact information, and we'll make sure everyone gets on the same page, and...
If you guys would like this, I can give this to you.
I'll take it.
If you want me to bring that up.
Yeah, it'd be great, thank you.
So for the nonprofit, uh, and setting up that, that account, do you need multiple people's signatures on that? Or can you sit down with just Jeremy Obsession, make your name, a board of, of members?
Yes and no. The, the easy answer is I can do the state part with Jeremy, okay? I only need him to tell me, he's got, one person needs to sign the paper to get a state nonprofit form. However, when we go from state, you have to have a state one, you go to a federal one. When we go from state to federal, then we have to name officers, okay? And that's when I need a...
Multiple signatures.
Multiple signatures, exactly, and most, I'll make it one, whoever, Jeremy, I'm sure it's what he'd pack, but when he tells me you guys are available, I'll get a bit.
Yeah, it's just, it was just a little confusing, you know, that he just said...
No, 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 just the state one, not the federal. Nope, nope.
Jeremy, just wanted to just, do you get a chance, have you been to Lock Haven yet?
I have. It's beautiful. Now, they spent a lot of money on that, but the quicker that we fundraise something, the, the sooner we can go to other organizations and seek out more money. Uh, I know that the Wolfsberry area has also done the same thing. I have friends that were members of the, the committee that, that sought the skate park to be built. Uh, and, and that goes in turn with Claye Bike Shop, I know you guys aren't gonna be familiar with it, but he's a bike shop owner, just like Tyler here's gonna be a skate shop owner, that oversaw the committee and made sure that these kids did the right things, and, and they, they turned nothing into a new skate park. You know, they didn't have a skate park in the Strankwater area at all, they would travel here to do I.R.S. So there are, and money available for us, you just need to start with something and, and, and seek out the funds. Because they're not gonna give you something without... But also, friend, friend PA, that they have a brand new skate park in, with my dry line. So there are a few different companies that need to be mounted to... You know, I actually sat down with Dry Line, yeah, years ago.
I was thinking if you have somebody, we, we have to work with, I'm not sure comparing what we have here, Lock Haven built.
It's comparable, Lock Haven's a little bit smaller, but the square footage is probably the same spread out with what they have. They have a long path skate park, so it just is aligned with a bowl on the backside and a pump track for bicycles. So it has multiple features, it was also done in stages as to why it cost so much money. They had multiple people working on the, that skate park. They had to use somebody different for the asphalt pump track, they did it in stages, and I think had multiple concrete companies come in. If we utilize one company, Dry Line, that Jeremy is speaking of, you guys have sat down with before, they seem to have a good rapport on what the things that they're building, and their costs can, can be lower considering they don't have to contract out the other ones.
Because, because the skate park is considered a playground, there's a lot of breaks that we can go after to make this built.
Might be something, ballpark, right?
Well, last time was, this was years ago, when we sat down with them, it was $49 per square foot. That, that acreage down there costs about $550,000 to do the entire park. So, I'm sure the cost has increased a little bit since last time you sat down with them, but... We're maybe a little lucky. So, we're, we're, again, we're looking around $800,000 to build a skate park the size that we have. That doesn't necessarily mean it has to cover the entire area. That's a huge slab of concrete that we have a spread out skate park on. The Lock Haven one is condensed, but there's also areas to put a bench, a pavilion, you know, other entities to the skate park that we can utilize. And we only have the one small pavilion right now. Um, a, a bigger one's for people to hang out in the rain, might, might be something to look into, and utilizing the space to cut costs and figure out what we can come up with.
Also, we could get a concession stand built that's ran by the city, then there's income coming into the city.
Utilized for baseball or for the skate park. I mean, that, we don't have that over around those baseball fields right now. Think about how many people come to the tournaments that we have in town. The, the, every parking lot in that area of town would be full when you have a little league baseball tournament.
I'll keep working on, Joel helping out, and, uh, when the show's getting a little nicer, people get older, Jeremy, we'll go see if we can patch up to buy time. As a means of raising money, guys, do they do like tournament type things or...
I, I used to hold a tournament when donating money back to the city. I'd take the cost out for like, uh, my insurance payout off, and, yeah. But, um, we used to do things to, you know, hold it for any sort of corporation, hold big, big contests and donate back to the city.
Gotcha, I was just curious.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's some of the things that we can do with the skate park to generate revenue to, of the city, but at this point, we need to start generating revenue from the skate park.
Now, I, I'm with you on this one.
Can you correct me if I'm wrong, but Lock Haven doesn't have lights, correct? So based off of the total setup, still, but...
They do not. But, like Mayor Roche said, mentioned last time, we already have the facility of the lights. So if we put the skate park back in the same place, those, those wouldn't have to change. If that was different, we already have them that could potentially be moved. Now, that has to go into the cost of what's going to be spent on the skate park, but there's power everywhere. So, um, moving them would be a lot easier to find.
Go ahead, sir, I'm gonna get public comment.
Uh, yeah, uh, my name's Eddie Gobach, I'm with the Blue Lovers Benefits Club. Uh, I'd just like to kind of put a little bit of detail on what my president said. Uh, we're looking to do like a ra- a ride slash rally, one to two day event. It would be a fundraiser primarily for the skate park, for the community, uh, community cleanup. We would donate a section of any money we would make off the run back to the city to help clean up the town, help pay businesses, buildings, do all of that. But the primary focus would be for that skate park that requires some area. We would just ask to work with the city with, uh, supplies, um, vendor lists, because we wanna keep it local, just like how you guys wanna keep everything local. We don't wanna pull outside vendors in to, say, uh, like craft shows or do a raffle to help also during the rally for the benefit of it, uh, donate gift baskets for the raffle, that kind of stuff. But that's what we're really asking to do, and we would just appreciate it if the town would let us do that and help and be partners in that action.
For sure, like I said, we have your contact, we'll reach out, get everybody involved, you know, get that going to help get that funded.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. Any other public comment at this time? Please state your name.
Sorry. Mayor Roche, this, this is on, uh, Shape Tree. I just wanted to bring up to date that, uh, the gateway down by Vice Markets is through the first phase. They went in there and removed some of the problem trees, weeds, poison, back to my management. Um, also in Titan Gardens, these poles have been removed along with the dedication plaque. So, uh, some tech must be on that, and they're repurposing. I understand that the Masons are planting trees in the 67 counties from the cuttings of the Liberty Tree in anticipation of the 250th anniversary of the country. You aware of that? Kidding. Um, but I, but I saw that in an article about the Masons are doing that in the 67 counties. When an order is requested for one of our shirts, and they live out of the area, what are the options besides like a check or an order? Can they do a credit card, or what's the situation?
I'm not sure what our capability is with the credit card. See, that's why we're looking at different banking options to do that. But you'd have, you'd honestly, you'd have to call Kevin on that, because I don't know what our capability is for credit card payments.
Credit card, but there's some sort of thing, and I don't know what they can do that.
Yes, I see.
Yeah, I, I didn't wanna say yes or no because I didn't know what the... Okay, okay. And when monies are in, in a department, are they pulled over at all?
Where's my B?
Like Shape Tree. Because that's why we try to get our orders in, because we have live stairs, so that we can...
No, we're having this discussion, and I want to talk to Joe after being...
The thing, I mean, maybe, maybe in the future, maybe get it pulled over so they get, we'll say, picky thanks of money saved up to maybe get a big purchase rather than starting over new every year. Well, that's what happens now, so maybe in the nays. They a lot of money from the city, I don't think.
I need a lot of money in general from the city.
That's a different story. Yeah, that should be... Let's look into that, we might as well try to get us all met.
We are taking a hit on these, even though they're worth out, so it's, um, they're $10. For, you know, I think it's a lot of this, like that, for two, absolutely, a couple of them. But, um, we're taking the hit on this, just so we can get, or have, you know, we're here, this is... So, um, I, I asked Robin, not only is this posted in his mayor's window, but also get a, an order form to also be displayed there in that window so that questions like that can be answered. It's also on the city's, uh, website as well. And we're gonna be working on our ordinances. I don't think that, we may not, because I believe it's gonna be in January, but, you know, the way it looks. I have a question about this cam garden for Turkey Delve. Is she the cam garden that's associated with breeders? Because that's the only cam gardens, arts, and I'm just up with. And she's been here, so she's looking back at her vintage, she comes from money. Like, uh, the drumstick stick, ice cream cone, that was, you know, back to 1908 or whatever. So, maybe she can partner with her, like, partner, and just say...
Get a response back, maybe.
But there might be a point, you know, where, this is small, small stuff, you know, maybe a pine, I don't care. Um, and just one more thing, school board, um, is gonna be a tough road. Um, and if anybody has any situations, please give us detail, because we're not gonna go on... Well, you're probably gonna do something. We need detail, because we're not gonna just go off on a lark.
Any other public comment at this time? Please state your name.
Well, this allows, I just want you to know that most, um, entities, and I don't know if it's true for your network, are able to upgrade to Windows 11 for free. So unless your computers are not up to snuff and you have to buy operating computers, you should not be having to pay. Now, I don't not, I'm not saying that I know your network's right, I have no idea what we speak, but a lot of also entities have decided not to go to... Now, I don't not, I'm not saying that I know your network's right, I have no idea what you speak, but a lot of also entities have decided not to go to Windows, and they've gone to other, uh, different operating systems, because of the cost, so.
Thank you. Any other public comment, please state your name.
Um, for Roseanne, do you want the, um, for like that, the light Saturday with Evo, you want them left on? I have lights that I bought for the Evo down to Riverfront, you want those to get far off, to put them up, and then it. Okay, I have them on, I wasn't sure if you wanted them up, I think it looks nice all the way around, so, okay, so, yeah, we changed them, it was nice.
Any other public comment?
Um, I just wanna say thank you to the, uh, Charles and Betty, thanks to you foundation for this, uh, twenty-four street stewardship program, uh, outpace them.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Alright, during the meeting.